Back on the record in independent cab matter, and I believe Mr. Winner, you're not.
Desert, yes.
Sure. Mr. Crafton, do you have a witness?
Yes, I actually have two witnesses. The first witness I'm going to call is Cheryl Givens.
I will, already?
Yeah.
Right hand? You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to the Taxi Cab Authority Board stated in the battle with truth.
I do.
Good afternoon, Ms. Givens.
Hi.
Would you please state your full name for the record?
Cheryl Denise Givens.
And can you briefly describe your experience in the taxi cab industry?
I've been employed in the industry for over 40 years. I previously held the positions of bookkeeper, office manager, general manager, accounting manager at Whittlesey Bell Companies. I was appointed general manager in about 1994, and I have represented their interests before this authority for nearly 30 years.
The companies that you represent are which companies that are intervenors here today?
Whittlesey Blue Cab and Henderson Taxi.
Okay. And in your capacity with Whittlesey and Henderson, have you become familiar with Nevada's statutes and regulations concerning taxi cabs in Clark County?
I have.
Can you describe in informal terms your understanding of NRS 706-8827?
There are five specific requirements that an applicant for a certificate must prove to this board in order for the application to be granted. If any one of those five, the board feels that there was insufficient evidence, then the application should be denied.
So the applicant has to prove all five of them?
Yes, sir.
And do you have a general understanding of what those five elements are?
Yes.
Could you please describe your understanding?
The applicant must show that they are fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor carrier. The service itself must be consistent with NRS 706-151. The application, if granted, cannot adversely affect other carriers in the industry. The applicant must show that the existing certificate holders will not meet the needs of the area he seeks to serve if the application is not granted, and it must benefit the riding public and the taxi industry.
And you mentioned as one of the elements, 706.151. What's your understanding of that statute?
706.151 states that the authority must fairly regulate the industry, must foster sound economic conditions within the industry, go against anything that would lend itself to unfair competition within the industry, or anything that would be detrimental to the traveling public.
And how about the other rule that I mentioned in my opening is NAC 706.453. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
And generally, what does that say?
The applicant must show through clear and convincing evidence certain matters related to his moral character, the financial ability to provide continuous service, and that he either has or has hired someone with sufficient experience to run a taxi cab company.
Now, you've participated on behalf of the companies throughout this application process, right?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the application of independent cab?
I am.
Have you read the entire contents of the application?
The original application, with the exception of reading all 70 some odd letters that people had signed.
Okay. So let's just chat a little bit about what you've read, what you've witnessed, and how those things, the evidence, whether they fit or not into the five elements that we just described in 8827.
Okay.
All right. Do you believe that independent cab companies fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor carrier?
Well, the application and the applicants have not shown that they have the ability to operate a taxi cab company. The applicant admitted during his deposition that he did not have experience running a taxi cab company. And in the original application, there was a resume for Mark Friedman. I knew Mark Friedman from his prior employment at one of the Whittlesey Bell Companies. Also, in the original pro forma, there was no salary and no benefits listed for this position. So I called Mark Friedman up on the phone, and the conversation lasted possibly a total of 30 seconds. I did not harass Mr. Friedman. I simply asked him how he was and said that I had this application and it had his resume in it, and asked him if he had accepted or intended to accept a position with independent cab, and he said no. And that was the end of the conversation. So I take issue with being told that I harassed anyone. But the resume was in there because the applicant has stated he knew Mr. Friedman from the NTA, and in his deposition said that he knew he was going to need help running this company because he'd never run a cab company before, knew Mr. Friedman, knew that he'd worked around the cab industry, had been with Las Vegas Strip Trolley, and that's why the resume was included with the application. Now, fast forward to today, we have two new pro formas. And in those pro formas, there is an individual listed as an operations manager and another person listed as an assistant manager. But neither one of those people have been named, and neither one of those people have come before this board to testify as to any experience that they may have. So in my opinion, I do not believe that the applicant has demonstrated that they have the experience, nor have they shown that they have already employed anybody with that experience to operate a cab company.
Okay. What about the second element, which says that the application as presented will promote safe, adequate, and efficient service?
Well, I have some issues with that. Mr. Ballivan, who, his experience is unquestioned in this industry, has went through both the original pro forma, the second two pro formas, and listed a number of issues that he thought were relevant with regards to mechanics, you know, being able to repair the vehicles. And from my company's perspective, I can say that we hire mechanics at one and one-half times what the applicant is prepared to pay. And even with that, in offering 100% for health insurance, life insurance, dental, vision, we provide vacation pay, we provide paid time off, we provide annual bonuses. Even with all of that, and having a fully functional auto shop, a fully functional body shop, tire shop, and service island, it is a challenge to keep mechanics, body men, and servicemen employed, even at the rates that we're paying and the benefits that we offer. You know, I just think that without those things, that you have issues maintaining the vehicles.
What about dispatch and what he's proposed for that? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, at 85 cents per call with a call center, it's similar to an IVR. There's nothing wrong with that. You know, it's systems that work, and there are companies out there that will provide that. But that is just one small element of what dispatch does. Over 60% of the calls that my dispatch department takes have nothing to do with requests for cab service. There are drivers calling in needing assistance with manual credit cards, drivers calling in with breakdowns, customers calling for fair estimates, just general job inquiries, a myriad of issues. Because we're dealing with not just people calling in to request a cab, there's people calling in on information, lost and found. I left my purse in the cab, I left my cellphone in the cab, and our dispatch department helps resolve those issues. We also have drivers, you know, calling in with issues that they have, and dispatch then either handles those problems or routes those problems to road supervisors, shift supervisors, the appropriate personnel that can assist them. Somebody has to answer all the rest of those calls.
What about safety and what Whittlesey and Henderson does to promote safety? Did you see any of that type of information contained in the pro forma?
Not in the original pro forma. In the second set of pro formas, the applicant has stated he's going to purchase cameras to be put into the vehicles, which every cab in Las Vegas has camera surveillance to put and install in it, and it's a very good thing. But there's no expense in the pro formas associated with the storage of the videos, software maintenance, or a person that is going to view those videos and counsel drivers. You know, it's one thing to say you're going to have a camera in the cab, and I'm only going to pull it if I get a customer complaint. That is one small piece of what those cameras do. We have a software provider that we pay $6 per month per camera to simply store videos and to pre-screen videos. They pre-screen, and if they see a video that they believe the driver needs to be counseled to try to improve his driving habits, they forward those clips to our full-time safety manager, whose sole job it is to review these clips, bring drivers in, counsel them to try to improve their behavior. It makes no sense for us to hire, train, and then just fire somebody because they don't do what we want them to do when we want them to do it. It's an education process, and it's a never-ending education process. I have seasoned drivers that have worked for the company for 30 years and still will occasionally get a clip, and we have to bring them in to remind them, don't make that right turn on red and exit in the garage because there's a sign saying you can't do it. These are the things that help prevent accidents and help keep the riding public safe. There's no expense in those pro formas for that. And, you know, I understand that the applicants can do some things themselves, but these things start compiling all of these things that have to be done on a daily basis in order to properly run the cab company.
Right.
And I have issues with that.
The third element of 8827, would the granting of this application have an unreasonable or adverse effect on the companies that you represent, Henderson and Whittlesey?
I would say yes. Independent cabs seek 35 medallions. That represents over 12% of Henderson's medallions, or excuse me, over 15% of Henderson's medallions and 12% of Whittlesey Blue Cab's medallions. The applicant has stated that during his deposition and in his application that he has represented hundreds of drivers before the NTA and the TA for citations, and that a lot of those drivers would be willing to come work for him at his company. 97% of the people that come in and apply to drive for me either full-time or part-time, or are looking to lease a cab for me are already permitted drivers in Clark County. And the mere shifting of drivers from my company to his, it will have an adverse effect on my company, I believe.
Okay. The fourth element, the applicant contends the existing certificate holders will not meet the needs of the area he seeks to serve by way of this application. How would you respond to that?
I would disagree. We do everything we can to service not just the tourists, but the locals as well. George mentioned Universal Dispatch. Universal Dispatch is a combined group of Yellow Checker Star, New Cab, Whittlesey Henderson, Desert, and Virgin Valley. We combine our resources so that 73% of the industry's cabs are centrally dispatched. Combined with that, we have what, devices that are called butlers. These butlers are installed in over 390 locations in Las Vegas and Henderson. What these allow is for a person to simply hit a button, and they can request a regular or wheelchair-equipped vehicle at that location. We have these devices installed in on- and off-strip hotels and motels, restaurants and bars. We have them in medical centers, assisted living facilities, senior living facilities, and it allows instantaneous ordering of a cab by simply pressing the button. They can order one or multiple vehicles, they can order the vehicle in advance. It allows them to input additional information, like their name and phone number. Then information is transmitted to the driver. The driver can then call the customer and say, hey, I'm on the way, starting that communication knowing that, you know, we've got the order and we're going to be there. So, you know, we are committed to providing not just the strip service. Everybody seems to focus on just the strip because that is where the most lucrative rides are. But we wouldn't have these devices, and we wouldn't pay someone a full-time salary to go and monitor where we're getting a lot of requests for service, go to these locations, convince them to allow us to install a butler, and then maintain it and teach their staff how to use it if we weren't committed to providing that service.
So just in summary on that point, Henderson and Whittlesey is willing to meet the needs of the traveling public going forward?
Yes, absolutely.
During the deposition, Mr. Carson claimed that the introduction of TNCs in Clark County as proof that the current carriers were not meeting the need. How do you respond to that accusation?
I disagree with that. It's naive to believe that putting more taxis on the road would mean that all of the Uber and Lyft, you know, would leave. When Uber and Lyft entered our market, they claimed they were going to bring in new drivers into the industry and provide new resources, and it was going to be a new business model, and it was going to be great for everybody. In truth, they ended up dividing up the taxi pie and taking rides from the taxi industry. 2015 was our high point in the industry for picking up rides at McCarran Airport. We had over 4.1 million rides that year out of McCarran. TNC started operating, that number dropped to 3.8 million in 2016. In 2017, it dropped to 3.2 million. 2017, 3.4, 2018, 3.2, 2019, 2.9. So at a minimum, we were reduced by 200,000 trips out of McCarran Airport every year that the TNC started operating. Now, those numbers, you know, changed dramatically during COVID, so I won't go into those. But putting more TNCs on the road, or putting more cabs on the road, is not going to make the TNCs leave. They're a different model than we are, they're not regulated the way we are, their pricing structure is very fluid, and what if any driver requirements they have, they're nowhere near as stringent as they are in the cab industry. And to even further try to provide the need, we actually lobbied to allow leasing in Clark County. And we started leasing in 2017, even though the companies make less money on the lease model than they do the employee model. But we thought that might be another way to attract drivers back from the TNCs if they could actually lease a cab from us and be able to make their own hours and have their own vehicle, as opposed to the wear and tear on their personal vehicle while they're driving for a TNC.
It's my understanding that you took a look into customer complaints here in Clark County?
I did. I submitted a public records request to the Taxi Cab Authority last year, specifically asking them to provide me total for the industry, refused to serve, and failure to serve complaints filed with the industry. In 2018, the Taxi Cab Authority received 107 complaints. We did 15.9 million trips that year, which equates to, and I'll try to count all these zeros, In 2019, the TA received 99 complaints. We had over 12 million trips that year, and that equates to .00008% complaints. In 2020, albeit it was COVID, there were five complaints, so it's not truly a valid number. We weren't fully operational, and it was .00011 complaints. Now, for the first 10 months of 2021, the TA received 127 complaints. We did over 8.8 million trips, and that is .00014% complaints.
The applicant has testified that the industry has shown it is unwilling to meet the needs since the interveners are not operating all of the medallions every day. What do you have to say about that?
Well, I know that there's been some discussion about the large allocations that happened in 2015. But just to give a little history, from 2006 to 2014, the Taxi Cab Authority Board allocated a total of 581 medallions to the existing 16 companies. So that's 16 companies, 581 medallions, over an eight-year period. That equates to about five medallions per company per year. From July of 2015 to February of 2016, the board allocated 1,171 medallions. Divided by 16 companies, over a period of eight months, we were allocated nine per company per month. So a total shift in those numbers. Now, and it's been said that now we know that that was definitely an overallocation. But at the time, prior to 2015, when the Taxi Cab Authority Board thought that there was a need for allocation, it was done on a temporary basis. We would petition the board saying CES was in town, and we need some more cabs. So the board would grant temporary allocation to operate just on specific days, specific times. And those allocations were operated, and then those medallions were returned to the board. There were also geographic restricted medallions, medallions that were only allowed to operate in certain areas of town. Time and day restricted medallions that were only allowed to operate Thursday from 2:00 p.m. to Saturday at midnight. There were all of these different types of medallions that were allocated so that we were only addressing the need where the need existed because there was a big fear of overallocation. Because if there was overallocation, there would be oversaturation of the market, the trips per shift would go down, drivers would leave the industry. And that was a generalized feel amongst everyone, the authority as well as the interveners. But then the introductions of the TNCs happened. And as a way to try to combat the fact that part of the attraction of working for a TNC was, drive your own car, make your own hours, do it whenever you want to, wherever you want to, however you want to, and we're okay with that. So we came before the board through various applications, I believe they were filed by Jason, and asked the board to take a look at granting us allocation that we could then say, we're going to put a cab out Sunday at 2:00 p.m. because the driver walked in the door and wants to go to work, and I have a medallion sitting here waiting for him to go, and a car. So the board made the decision to allow us the flexibility to be able to say, you know what? We already know it's going to be busy this coming weekend because there's a fight in town. So rather than having to, a week before that, go before the TA and ask for five more cabs, Cheryl's got five cabs, Cheryl's got five drivers, she's going to go ahead and put those on the road, allowing us the ability to better manage our resources of our drivers and vehicles.
Okay. Why just put all the medallions out all the time?
Well, that negates the whole point. It's why they gave them to us, because the whole point was to allow us to best manage our resources. And if we flooded the market with every single medallion we have, or every single car we have available, then the trips per shift are going to go down. And if drivers aren't making any money, they're going to quit. I mean, it may look really good to work for Cheryl and have Cheryl provide that cab, but if Cheryl has got every cab that she has out on the road, and I'm not making any money, I'm not going to stay in that industry. The other side of that is, I'm not going to get anyone that's going to be willing to lease for me if he's not going to be able to make a decent profit. Because as an independent contractor, they're putting out money upfront in hopes that they're going to make that back and then some, so.
Okay. So the final element of 8827, do you believe the addition of 35 medallions will benefit the public and the taxi cab business in Clark County?
No. And I say that because the application as presented is offering nothing new. This isn't an application for, for instance, a wheelchair-equipped-only cab company that is going to offer just wheelchair rides to those people that need that service. This is an application for 35 cabs to do exactly what everyone else in the industry is doing, exactly how everyone else in the industry is doing it. I don't believe that there is a need for 35. I don't believe that there is a need for an additional 70 medallions for the type of application that I see before you today. If the board felt that there had been sufficient evidence to put more medallions out on the road, the means by which to do that is equal allocation to the existing companies. There hasn't been any evidence that there's a need for additional allocation or an additional cab company that's doing the same thing everyone else is doing since 2015, when we asked for the medallions to better serve and better fight against the TNCs.
So I think you've already answered this, but I want to make sure. So even if it was, I mean, let me back up. You heard Mr. Ballivan testify, he doesn't believe that any of the pro formas would be compensable. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Even if they were compensable, would you still intervene in this application?
Yes, because as I stated, there is not a need that I can see. And I haven't seen any evidence during this hearing that would lead me to believe that there is a need for 35 additional cabs. I've shown you what the complaints were that were filed with the industry. I haven't seen any evidence that would say that any of the existing certificate holders are not meeting the need and that the only way for this perceived need to be met would be an allocation or the addition of 35 new cabs by way of independent cab companies' application. And the belief that because we're not operating all of our medallions, even the applicant himself doesn't believe that that's an issue anymore because the applicant in his new pro forma has shown that he's not going to operate all 35 on this floor during the week. So he has totally changed his opinion based on his pro forma of what he'd originally thought when he was deposed.
Okay. All right. As far as the five elements go, is there any other testimony you'd like to give that we haven't covered?
No.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
No questions?
No questions. Carson?
Thank you, sir. The record should reflect that Mr. Wad is not here. I said the record should reflect that Mr. Wad is not here, so I didn't pass him. How many drivers does Whittlesey and Henderson have combined?
Lease and fleet, or, I would say about 500?
And if you looked at my pro formas, let's just say on the lease one, I would have 35 shifts leased with 10 double shifts. Do you recall that?
Well, you would have 25 and then 10 double shift, right? I think it's what your numbers were?
35.
Okay, you have 35 medallions.
Yeah.
And you're going to lease 25 of them as single and 10 as double, or you're...
No.
Oh, okay. Did I miss, did I miss look at that?
Yes, I believe you did.
So you're going to take 10 medallions and offer them on a double lease. Am I correct?
Correct. So I have 32 cars and 10 cars.
Carson, sure.
32 cars at 15 trips per shift.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. So I'm going to use 32 cars at that in one shift, one day, Monday morning, Monday evening, right?
Oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about your lease side.
Right. This is the lease side.
Okay.
The lease structure.
Okay.
Okay. 35 vehicles, 850 a week, right?
With a 10% vacant CP.
So I did that, so 32 cars goes out on a single lease.
Okay.
Then I also had 10 autos going on the double shift.
That you're going to do the double, right?
So that would be a total of 32 plus 10, correct? So 42 leases.
Okay.
So if I had 42 people, independent contractors, and you have 500, I've got like 95% less problems than you're going to have as far as phone calls and everything like.
Objection to the form of the question.
No, you testified that, oh, there's people calling in, there's cab drivers with flat tires, accidents?
Yes. There's an objection, stand.
Oh, okay.
Form of the question.
And I'll rephrase it. You testified that your dispatch phone is ringing off the hook because you have drivers with flat tires, drivers with accidents, people looking for, lost and found, lost your purse, lost your cellphone. Is that correct?
More than 60% of the calls that our dispatch department takes are for non-ride-related issues, is what I said.
Okay. And I have 95% less people to look after. I've got 45 people, you've got 500. So that's about 95% less phone calls that I'll probably be receiving for people that, you know...
Well, I would, what I get.
Right. I'm just saying. I mean, it's not, you're a big company, right? Of course, you're going to get more phone calls. If I have 35 cars, I'm not going to have, you know, the amount of accidents, the amount of problems, the amount of lost items. Is that true?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So based upon that, you can't really say that my dispatch is not reasonable?
I don't think I ever said that your dispatch was unreasonable. I stated that what you were paying for was simply a service that was going to take a request for a cab and dispatch a cab. That's not what my dispatch does in and of itself, and that you have two individuals that are going to do what appears to be the job of several different people, and I just questioned that.
Okay. How many medallions do you have combined?
We have 286 medallions in Whittlesey and 225 in Henderson.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
286 medallions with Whittlesey Blue Cab and 225 for Henderson.
So I'm just going to rough it up to 500 medallions plus?
Okay.
Is that right? You have over 500 cabs or medallions?
Medallions, yes.
Okay. And you have less drivers than medallions allotted to you?
Yes.
Is it, if these guys grant me in the CPCN, would I be able to join the Universal Dispatch that you guys are in?
If you're willing to pay for those services, I'm not going to give them to you for free.
I understand that.
And ultimately, it wouldn't be just my decision, just so you know. Universal Dispatch is a combined effort, like I said, between YCS, New Cab, Deserts, and Virgin Valley, and Whittlesey and Henderson. So the executive board members of Universal Dispatch would decide whether or not to allow you to become a part of that or purchase those services, I should say.
Okay. And if I did purchase those, and they allowed me to, by the grace of God, allowed me to come in and be with you guys, that's a, is it comparable, my costs?
But you're, you're only...
Is curb's cost comparable to yours?
Are you saying that if all my dispatch did was simply pick up the phone and dispatch a call that 85 cents is reasonable? I think 85 cents to a dollar would be reasonable. I don't think that what curb quoted you was unreasonable.
Okay, and you've obviously heard my questioning to Mr. Balaban. Is it possible that if somebody calls on the line and the phone rings that either myself or Claudia or someone could answer that phone call?
You and Claudia are going to be doing an awful lot of work if you want to actually do that and be in the office and be involved in all the day-to-day operations. I personally wouldn't do it, I'm the GM. And I personally would not do the job of what my dispatch department does as well as my shift supervisors, road supervisors, it's just too much.
Do you own any percentage of those companies?
Of Whittlesey or Henderson? No, unfortunately, I don't. My last name is not Bell. You might please strike that from the record. Just in case, brand decided.
Okay. You said you know the statutes and regs pretty well, right?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I've had to read them upon occasion, so yes.
Is a taxi cab a common motor carrier?
Yes, it is a common motor carrier.
Are there other types of common motor carriers?
Yes, there are.
Like what?
Limousines, sedan, ambulance. I hadn't thought about listing them all, but yes, there are other common motor carriers.
Are you aware that I'm part owner of a limousine company?
LVL, I believe, yes.
Okay, is Las Vegas Limousine and their vehicles common motor carriers?
Objection, relevance?
Can't tell yet, counsel, I don't know if this is foundation or not.
Yes, it is a common motor carrier.
Okay, and as part of receiving a common motor carrier, you get a CPCN with a limousine?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and who issues those CPCNs?
The NTA.
And what are their requirements?
Objection, relevance?
Sustained.
Okay. Do you, are you aware that the NTA has approved my fit, willing, and ableness to operate a common motor carrier?
I would have to respond by saying, I assume, since you are part owner of LVL, that the NTA determined that you were fit, willing, and able to operate a limousine company.
Okay, and a limousine company is a common motor carrier?
Yes.
Similar to a cab company?
It, a cab company is a common motor carrier, but I would say that they are not at all similar.
The statute says otherwise?
Well, actually, the statute that is relative to today's proceeding specifically states the word taxi cab motor carrier, not common motor carrier.
Okay. You mentioned calling Mark Friedman, correct?
Yes, I did.
I know that.
Yes.
Is he qualified to operate a, manage a cab company?
Well, he managed Las Vegas Strip Trolley for us and I worked very closely with him. So I believe that there would be a learning curve for Mark simply because Las Vegas Strip Trolley was a fixed route system and taxi cabs, as you well know, are not a fixed route system. But I believe with, with his basic knowledge, if he had additional help, I think he could, he could do it. There would be a learning curve, but I think he could, he could do it.
Okay, so if I said I was going to hire Mark Friedman, what would you say?
Objection, the reason, the reason I'm objecting is because he admitted to me when I was examining him that he is not hiring Mark Friedman. I can't, why are, why are we talking about Mark Friedman?
I can't hire anybody because I don't have a company yet, so.
Let's come to town, counsel.
I think I'd join the objection as speculation, it starts off, if I did.
Yes.
I don't think that's.
It's a hypothetical and a speculation.
Well, she can qualify to speak to hypotheticals, she's testifying in her expert capacity.
Well, but this isn't asking her a question within her expertise, which is something about a particular person's qualifications.
Okay, Mark Friedman worked with you, correct?
He worked for Las Vegas Strip Trolley.
Okay, was he also in charge of Bell or Whittlesey's safety programs?
He conducted some safety training, but he wasn't in charge of the programs, no.
Okay, and like you said earlier, that if he was to become my GM, I'm not saying he is, or is going to be, you believe that he would be qualified?
Well, I think that he has some qualifications that would be necessary. Whether he had enough qualifications to effectively run it would be for the board to decide.
You mentioned that, and I want to say this, 97% of the people that come and join your company are already permitted?
I said 97% of the applicants for full-time and part-time employment or that are coming in to try to get a lease from us are already permitted by the taxi cab authority.
And to be permitted by the taxi cab authority, do they have to have an employer?
Originally, yes, but once you have a permit, that permit stays with you for life so that you can go into any of the companies and say, I've already been issued a TA permit, so they've already cleared me to work in Clark County, I'd like to come work for you.
Okay, do you hire drivers from other companies?
Frequently.
Okay, so your testimony earlier was that there would be an unreasonable and adverse effect because I would be hiring people that might come from your company, is that right?
Close enough.
But you do the same thing to the other drivers?
And I think it's absolutely unreasonable. I'm trying everything I can to attract drivers from outside of the industry, drivers that are already working for Uber and Lyft. We advertise to that group of people that have never driven before to try to get them to come work for us. It's cannibalism at its worst form in this industry because someone doesn't like something that one of George's supervisors says to him, he'll come right over and go and apply, you know, at Whittlesey to see if he can come work for us. It does nothing to improve the industry or improve the number of drivers in the industry. It is simply cannibalizing one another. And do I think it's good? No. Do I think it's adverse? Absolutely. I'm trying to hire people from outside our industry.
Okay, but you guys can do it, it's just if a new company comes in, it's cannibal, it's not, not okay?
Objection to the form.
It's unreasonable and adverse?
He, would you like me to explain? Mr. Chief Chairman, it's your ruling.
Yes, it is. Your objection to what statement did he make?
He, he said if he comes in and does it, it's cannibalism. When she just testified that what she tries to do is hire from outside the industry. So he's mixing and matching two different hypotheticals.
She's already admitted that it's cannibalism for her as well.
When she, when, when the industry is hiring from one another, he tries to hire from outside the industry.
That is correct.
That's what she testified to.
That's what she tries, yes.
Right.
Sustained.
Thank you.
Do you know what your company's maintenance and expense is for per mile?
Well, we're not like George. Ours, we try to keep it below 35 cents. George gets, George gets a lot of free stuff that we don't necessarily get. And that's why, it's not sounding good in here, is it? Because, you know, he does all of these, you know, test products and things like that. You know, we have had test vehicles in the past. It's not something that's, you know, very big anymore and it, you know, I think the last one that was really good for us was a tire program, you know, that we had with Michelin. But, you know, our expense per mile is higher than George's because he gets all of those other perks. We're at about 30 to 35%. We try to keep it below 35, but it's a little higher in the summer months because of the extra wear and tear on the vehicles.
Go ahead, has you just a copy of, it's an intervenor Henderson taxi and Whittlesey Blue Cab supplemental answers to interrogatories? Go ahead and take a second to familiarize yourself, have you seen that document?
Yes, I have.
Counsel, are you familiar with the document?
I am.
Are you going to ask the whole thing or direct her to one of the interrogators, to one of them?
Okay.
Okay.
First off, is that your signature to verify those?
Yes, it is.
Are you the person that provided the answers to those questions?
In conjunction with my counsel, yes.
Okay. First, let me see. Says, the first question says you have 286 medallions issued to Whittlesey Blue Cab, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and it asks you, how many of those medallions do you, do you use in a certain amount of time, a certain month? Do you remember that?
Yes.
And your response?
We don't track the use of medallions.
Do you keep trip sheets?
We have electronic trip sheets.
Do the trip sheets list the medallion that went out?
Yes, it does. Well, the old handwritten ones do, I'm not sure if the new electronic ones do, but the handwritten ones used to.
Okay, so there is a way for you to track them, you would just have to go back through your trip sheets to see which car number one, used medallion number two, you know, stuff like that, you could, you could piece it together.
Well, there'd be no reason for us to maintain that number.
I understand that, but there, is there a possibility?
Oh, my gosh, well, yes, if I took every single trip sheet every single day and wrote down what medallion number was on it for a specific time, then yes, I could, I could come up with that.
Okay, so that's not a correct answer. There is a way that you could do it, it's just that you said it was going to be too hard.
No, we just, we don't track it.
Okay, I didn't say that, I said, how many, can you identify the number of medallions used in operation?
And my response was, my response was, we don't keep track of the number of medallions used in operations for each day in a particular month, which is not an untrue statement.
But you would be able to tell me how many medallions were used, not tracked.
Want me to answer this again? I'm happy to.
Is that the question you asked, asked in the interrogatory?
Yes.
The question is, the Nevada Taxi Cab 30's website lists 286 medallions issues, issued to Whittlesey Blue Cab Company. Please identify the number of medallions used in operations for each day in the month of June 2021. My answer was, Whittlesey Blue Cab does not keep track of the number of medallions used in operations for each day in a particular month. So if you're asking me if I lied, no, because we don't keep track of that.
Is there, but there is a way for you to determine that number?
If I went back, if we actually had handwritten trip sheets, which we don't, we use electronic trip sheets, and I went back and had Captain create a program to say, find out which medallion was allocated to this trip sheet on every single day for this particular month, and I paid for that program, then yes, I could, but we don't track it, that's why I didn't provide it.
Okay, but it was possible for you to give me that objection.
Counsel, you did, the question propounded in the interrogatory is not, is it possible? You're now asking, is it possible? So we all know it's possible now, correct?
Objection.
No, I would have to pay, like I said, for a program to be designed to get that information. And I'm not hiding the fact that I don't operate 286 medallions every single day. I'm not trying to claim that I do.
Not to put too fine a point, it is not part of inconsistency.
Can you look at number six, I asked you, I said, basically, tell me what's wrong with my pro forma, do you remember that?
Well, you, I got to look at the question. So if you contend that the pro forma income statement submitted with the application is incorrect, insufficient, or otherwise do not agree with the projections, please identify each and every area of concern that you may have, including an explanation as to why the projections are inaccurate.
You remember that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you provided a response, is that correct?
Yes, would you like me to read it?
Sure, what I just, I'll point it out, it's a little quicker.
Sure.
Okay, one of the reasons it says that the proposed pro forma, or this, what about the application does not account for expenses associated with workers' compensation for independent contractors.
Yes.
I don't have to pay workers' comp for independent contractors.
Well, I would disagree with you on that, and here's why. NRS 616B.639 speaks to independent contractors relative to workers' comp. And part of what it, as well as the national compensation for, or the national, NCCI, that regulates workers' comp and designs the rates for workers' comp based on position, both believe that in an independent contractor situation, if the contractor is providing the same service that the company is providing, that that company still must cover them under workers' comp. Or in the alternative, have that independent contractor provide evidence of workers' comp coverage to the company. So I've had insurance for my, workers' comp insurance for my lease drivers through Pro Group Management and Insurance Company of the West. And both of their groups of attorneys believe that, I have one of two options in this, either to provide the workers' comp insurance for my lease drivers or require that the lease driver provide me evidence that he has obtained his own workers' comp coverage. And obviously, you know, that would be very difficult. I don't think I'd get any lease guys, you know, wanting to lease from me if I told them they had to buy outside workers' comp coverage for themselves. So we provide that insurance for our drivers. So I disagree with you in that. I believe that since they are independent contractors and they're providing the same service that my employees provide, then I'm required to provide them with workers' comp.
Okay, let me show you another document, intervenor's summary of expected witness testimony.
Okay.
And has you listed, obviously, as somebody that's going to give testimony. The first, first sentence of paragraph number two, could you read that?
Said Mrs. Gibson's wealth of experience at Whittlesey coupled with her unrivaled knowledge. I love Mark Trachten. Industry give her a unique perspective.
Okay, what does unrivaled knowledge mean?
Means that, I think what Mark was trying to say is that I know, I have probably forgotten more about the taxi cab industry than people coming into the industry know. But in no circumstances was Mr. Trachten trying to say I'm the smartest person in the industry or that I'm smarter than George.
Well, it seems to say the opposite, George is smarter than you.
Well, George is smarter than me, I wouldn't disagree with that.
All right, let's look at George, let's look at George's website here, Desert Cab Inc. You look at George's leasing program off of his website, have you seen this?
No, I haven't.
Okay, well, he says on his website, I will not be afforded workers' compensation. So he's not paying his lease drivers workers' compensation.
I don't remember your company.
Relevance here?
I'm going to sustain that on the following basis. The testimony of Ms. Gibson is that she got advice from counsel
Right.
that she should pay.
Cover workers' comp, yeah.
Should acquire these coverages.
Yes.
That is the state of the record. There's really nothing to debate, that's why she did what she did. Mr. Carson wants to, you know, examine that counsel. But the state of the record is, she didn't make this decision, she made it on the basis, well, she made the decision, but she made it on the basis of vice counsel. In your experience? And that another carrier might have ignored that or might have a different structure isn't evidence that's before us, so there's not a foundation, so I agree.
In your experience, do you know of any other company that leases vehicles that provides workers' comp?
I know that there are other companies that lease, but whether they provide workers' comp or have their independent contractors provide it, I don't know what their deal is.
Do you know Mr. Awat?
I do.
Do you think he's a smart man?
Is he here? Yes, I do, I do. I'm sorry. I need a little levity once in a while when I'm up here. Yes, I think Jason is, is very intelligent.
He's a competent operator?
I would believe so.
Okay, he once said, back in 2015, when you talked, we're talking about the allocations, that the more cars we have as an industry, the less cars Uber and Lyft will have. Do you agree with that statement?
That's what we all thought back then.
Do you agree with that statement?
In 2015, I would have agreed that we all thought if we could get a bunch of cabs on the road, that we could get these guys to stay working for us and not go work for the TNCs, in 2015, but that was seven years ago.
Okay, do you think in retrospect that was wrong?
Yes, absolutely.
So you guys make mistakes?
Oh, well, I think that, well, you know, I don't know that I necessarily would say it was a mistake. We made the best decision we could based on the information we had at the time. We had no way of guessing that things were going to happen, like the TNCs would blow up and there'd be over 40,000 of them. I think at the time, everybody, the best estimate was max was going to be like 15 grand. There was over 40,000 of them that hit the streets. And free as companies went under, we've had a pandemic. There's a lot of things that we didn't know were going to happen. But I believe that we acted and the board, who approved the allocation, acted on the, the information as best they could at the time.
Okay, do you think riding in a taxi cab is safer than riding in an Uber or Lyft?
I believe that taxi cab drivers are vetted far more better than Uber and Lyft drivers. And I believe that the standards that our vehicles must maintain means that it's inevitable that a person would be safer riding in a cab versus riding in a TNC.
So safer?
I believe so, yes.
In your experience?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In your experience, would you agree with this statement? If somebody uses a taxi cab versus. If somebody uses a taxi cab versus an Uber and Lyft, it's better for the taxi cab industry in general?
Any rides that the taxi cab industry gets are better for the taxi industry because it generates revenue for the board, for the state, and helps the health of the industry.
Okay, if there's more cabs on the street, is there a better opportunity for somebody to sit down in one?
Versus what?
Versus not. Say there's 100 cabs on the street, right now, and I put out 105, didn't that just increase my opportunities to get, uh, that, that fare?
Okay, if you yourself put 100 cabs out, versus you yourself putting 105 cabs out, then you would have five more cabs out there that might get a ride.
Right.
Well, I can't disagree with that, that's simple math.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, more cabs on the street, better the chance that the riding public jumps into that cab versus an Uber or a Lyft.
No, because now you just said versus an Uber or Lyft. Okay, if there's nothing out there but cabs and people, then that'd be one thing, but putting out 100 cabs versus putting out 105 cabs isn't gonna take those Ubers and Lys off the road. If there were no Uber and no Lyft, and you had 1,000 people standing there waiting for cabs, and you put 100 cabs out, you'd get 100 rides. Put 105 out, you'd get 105 rides. That's not what, that's what you asked me, you didn't ask me anything about Uber and Lyft.
Okay, my bad. Keeping Uber and Lyft in the situation. If Uber and Lyft's numbers stay the same, for the sake of argument, 200.
I wish.
I know, don't say it. But if there's 200 Uber and Lys out there, and 100 cabs out there right now, if you put 105 cabs out there, don't you have a better chance than you did with 100 to get that ride?
Not necessarily, because I believe that the TNCs attract people that wanna ride in TNCs. You know, I, I personally have never taken an Uber or a Lyft. Anytime I, and even outside the city of Las Vegas. I've been in, uh, San Francisco, I've been in Phoenix, I will take a cab. I am a cab kinda person. Um, I know people that will do both. I know people that will see, and whichever one is gonna give them the cheapest route, that's what they're gonna take. So no, I don't believe that by simply putting more cabs in the, in the fix, or in the mix, that it's gonna reduce the number of TNCs or increase necessarily the number of rides that a cab gets versus a TNC. So no, I disagree with that.
Okay.
I guess this is a short answer.
It's fine, you can. From what I gather from your testimony, is that there's no way a new applicant can come in to this market as long as you're holding on to medallions that you're not using?
That's not what I said.
So that's, is that a, not a fair statement?
Um, if an applicant were to come in and have a really unique idea, offering a service that isn't being provided, or a niche, or boutique idea, that isn't being done by the existing certificate holders, that's one thing, but this application, in my opinion, is simply asking to do, with 35 medallions, and 32 on the slower days of the week, everything that the existing certificate holders are already doing and already servicing. I mean, we've serviced MTM, which was formerly called Logisticare. We service senior rides, um, you know, there's nothing new being offered here. So, I'm not saying that just because we're not operating all of our medallions that no new cab company could come in with an idea and get approved, or that I would even oppose. Um, what I'm opposing is, this application is simply seeking to do exactly what I am doing and all the other carriers, um, and I don't believe that there's a need for that.
Let's say I did come in with some kind of a niche idea. Wouldn't you guys just be complaining that this is a practice that would tend to increase or create competition that may be detrimental to your company?
Objection, improper hypothetical. Caution speculation. Join.
Well, she testified that she was familiar with 706151, which clearly states that one of your, one of the declarations is to discourage any practices which would tend to increase or create competition. So, I'm basically saying, if I came in and said, oh, I'm gonna do a boutique or a handicap-only thing, I'd be facing the same opposition because now it's, now increasing their competition.
I'm gonna allow the question.
I, I wouldn't know whether I would, you know, going to oppose it or not. If you came in the door, a really good example is indeed Handicap. Handicap was a company that came in, filed an application under the premise that they wanted to operate wheelchair-only vehicles. Well, originally, on the surface of it, you know, that sounded just fine because we're thinking that in offering this service, they're going to only provide this service to those individuals who are in need of a wheelchair-equipped taxi. But then they turned around and said, oh no, that's not what the application's going to be. We want fully unrestricted access into all of Clark County to operate as a non-wheelchair company, but we're gonna specialize in trying to service those wheelchair customers sooner than the other companies that have wheelchair-equipped vehicles will. And of course, we did oppose that because had it been just a wheelchair company for those individuals that need wheelchair service, that would be like a niche company, a boutique company, something that, you know, we necessarily, maybe we wouldn't have opposed. So I, I can't really say, you'd have to tell me what your idea is.
Okay, so let's go back to Handicap. When you first read the application of Handicap, you thought it was for a wheelchair-only service?
At first blush, until, you know, we got into it, then we realized that's not what they were going to do.
So you thought it was, Handicap was handicap transportation only?
Mm-hmm.
Yet you still intervened?
We intervened once we figured out that they were actually going to operate non-wheelchair service, and that became a part of contention in, in the whole proceeding.
You didn't find that out during the discovery phase?
No, it was in the application, that in order for them to sustain the company, they would need to, um, operate non-wheelchair rides as well.
Okay. Let's talk about 7068827 real quick. Got it?
Well, I, I kinda know part of it, but it's kinda hard to keep it memorized exactly the way you attorneys do it.
Forgive me on that one. In discovery, I asked if you had any evidence that I was not fit, willing, or able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor company. You remember that, interrogator?
Yes, and I think our response was, it wasn't up to us to prove that you weren't, it was up to you to prove that you are, I think was the response in the, uh, if you wanna show it to me, I can read it. But, that's my remembrance of it.
Okay. So you didn't produce any evidence of that, did you? Any documents or anything?
No, because it wasn't, it wasn't up to us to prove that you were unfit, it was up to you to prove that you were fit, I believe was the response. Like I said, I can read it if you'd like me to.
No, it's fine, I'm just saying, in response to that, did you produce any documents? You said you didn't have to? You didn't, right?
Is that the question, to produce documents?
No, it says-
I, I, I can't see it from over here.
State all facts and opinions and identify any and all documents you intend to use as evidence that applicants are not fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a motor, taxi cab motor carrier.
Would you like me to read my answer?
Hey, could I?
Objection, it is your burden of proof to prove you are fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor carrier. Without waiving this objection, intervenors intend to use any or all of facts, opinions, and or documents that have been or may be discovered and/or produced in this matter during the discovery period up to and including the hearing on this application to assist the Taxi Cab Authority Board to determine whether you are fit, willing, and able to perform the services of a taxi cab motor carrier.
Okay. Without waiving the objection, I believe that the objection was overruled by David, uh, Hearing Officer Cassidy.
It was not.
I don't think it was.
It wasn't.
There is-
There were other interrogatories that were, the objections were overruled, but that one was not. It was actually the subpoenas, um, after these, they went to subpoenas, and there was objections in the hearing on, uh, documents to produce. I know I did.
Fine, so in this thing, it says, without waiving objection, intervenors use any, all facts, opinions, or documents that may have been discovered or produced in this matter. Can you point any documents that you have that shows that I'm not fit, willing, and able?
Any documents that I have? No, I have no documents in my possession that would lend itself to have the board believe that you are not fit, willing, and able.
Okay, what are, are you saying I'm not fit, willing, and able? That you sit here today?
What I'm saying is that I believe the application as presented shows that the applicants, um, have failed to meet that burden because you have both admitted that you have no experience operating a taxi cab company, nor have you employed anyone that has such experience. Um, and that in and of itself is, is a question that the board is gonna have to answer. Um, but you're asking my opinion, so you have it. I mean, I think you're both great people, and I, I'm sure you're, you're willing and you want this, otherwise, why would you put yourself through this? But you, by your own admission, you don't have the experience, so I, I question that.
Okay, you, you were here for my testimony, right?
Yes, I was.
And I mentioned, uh, my, my partner, Tony Boar.
I've, I've never met him, so I, I-
Okay.
Yeah.
So are you from, he does the day-to-day operations for Las Vegas Limousine?
If you say he does.
Okay, if he were to become, uh, this, uh, my general manager, would you also question his abilities to run a taxi cab company?
Objection, objection, hold on. Just asking a question about this Tony Boar, um, who's not before this board. We have seen no evidence of Tony Boar.
It's a hypothetical question, that if I hired Mr. Boar,
Right.
would he be qualified?
Right. She doesn't-
And I can't answer that.
Right.
Nobody knows who he is, because he's not before the board.
So, do you, you guys operate a limousine?
Oh, hold on, can we-
Wait, Mr. Carson. Do you disagree that the witness has said, I don't know who he is?
Right.
Then she can't answer questions about Mr. Boar, understand?
You know who he is, but you just don't know him, right?
I don't know who he is either, other than who you say he is.
Okay. So the only person that can operate a taxi cab company is somebody that's already operating a taxi cab company?
I believe that the statute states that the applicant must show through clear and convincing evidence that he or she either has sufficient experience to operate a taxi cab motor company, or has employed someone with sufficient experience to do so.
Okay.
That's my reading of it.
What does sufficient mean to you?
Adequate.
Okay.
Better than average.
What, there's 16 cab companies, right?
Yes.
Meaning there's 16 general managers, correct?
Well, no, because some of them are commonly owned.
True, okay. So there's less than 16 general managers in the whole city of Las Vegas, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so, I would have to find, pick somebody from one of those 16 cab companies in order to qualify under your-
I didn't say that.
Okay. But it's just your opinion that I can't do it because I've never operated a taxi cab company.
Okay. Would you like, I'll, I'll answer you again. In your deposition, and in your wife's presentation, you have both stated that you had no experience operating a taxi cab company. In your deposition, you took it a step further by saying you knew you didn't have that, which was why you enlisted the conversation with Mark Friedman, um, because you knew him from the NTA. Based on everything that has been presented while I've been in attendance, the applicants have shown that they do not have the experience, nor have you employed anyone with that experience. That's all I'm saying.
Are you saying that the experience has to be some form of hands-on?
Okay. Again, um, I don't know what type of experience you can have in a position without it being hands-on. However, I will repeat myself again and state that both you and your lovely wife have stated that you have no experience operating a taxi cab company, nor, as far as I know, as we sit here today, have you employed anyone with sufficient experience? If you have, I don't know this, because I haven't heard them testify, I haven't seen their resume, they haven't been deposed, I, I don't know how else you'd like me to answer that, in all honesty, Brent.
Obviously, like you said before, you were, you were here for the, my original, the opening and the, my testimony, right? My testimony statement?
Yes, I was.
Okay, you saw the PowerPoint and all of that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Let me show you some of the pictures that were contained in that PowerPoint. Have you seen this picture before?
Yes, I believe it was on the screen.
Okay. And what does this picture depict, in your words?
Well, the picture's not timestamped or dated, it's, this is just based on what you're saying when this was taken. Uh, there's no time of day, but it appears to be people that are standing at a taxi cab stand waiting for a taxi.
Okay, do you see any taxi cabs showing, showing up?
I see no taxi cabs there.
Is that good for the, the traveling public?
Well, I'm not saying that there are no taxi cabs anywhere on the street, but I can't state that these cabs weren't pulling in. I mean, this is a still photo that shows that there are some people waiting in line for a cab. Um, you're saying it was one of the taxi stands at the convention center on February 5th, which I believe would have been during World of Concrete, I believe would be, that's about the time that that convention's in town. But are there going to be moments in time where someone may be waiting for a cab and a cab not be there, waiting for them to get in? I'm not gonna deny that.
Okay, just answer the, do you think that this picture depicts a positive for the traveling public?
A positive for the traveling public, I'm, do I think that, that that is good? No, I don't.
Same with the next few questions, same convention center, same date?
Yeah, it's, this is all the same day, so I, you know, yeah. So I'm assuming, you know, based on this, that the convention just let out, and about 30,000 to 40,000 people have exited the convention center, and there are not sufficient cabs to immediately transport those 30,000 people that exited the convention center when the convention ended.
Okay, how about Mandalay Bay on February 5th? Do you see that taxi line?
Yep.
Do you think this picture alone-
I would agree that each of these little photos that you have in here show a moment in time where there are people that are waiting for taxi cabs, yes.
Do you agree that it's not a benefit for the traveling public to be standing in a line that long?
Well, I don't know how long they were standing in line, um, so I, I can't, I can't answer that.
Okay, is there, when you say you don't know how long, is there a limit that you would put on how many, how long a person should stand in the taxi line before they get a ride?
Oh, well, no, I'm not saying that there's a limit on how long they should stand in line, but I also think that there's a reasonableness to it. When 50,000 people exit a stadium at one time, it's an impossibility to expect that there'll be 50,000 cabs there to pick them up. And I think that people understand that when they exit a large event or a convention center, that they know that they're going to have to wait a little while before that cab can get there to pick them up. If for no other reason, because it's impossible for that many cabs to stage at any venue.
You mentioned, are you GM for two different companies?
Whittlesey and Henderson.
Okay. Um, let's take Whittlesey. Is, is Whittlesey profitable this year?
Yes, it is.
Is Henderson profitable?
Yes, it is.
Okay. If, uh, the authority grants my certificate for 35 cars, are you gonna shut down either of those companies?
Well, it wouldn't be my decision, as I'm not an owner, but I would hope that Brent Bell would decide not to.
Okay. Would you counsel him to shutting down?
No, that would be self-defeatist.
Okay. So if 35 cars go on the road, you're not gonna shut down?
I never said that the companies would quit operating.
Okay. If you're holding on to these medallions in your, they say, in your desk or something, I think the lingo is, they're sitting at the desk or something like that, what is your incentive to put them on a car and get somebody out there?
Well, the incentive would be when we believe the business is out there, and we have the vehicle, and we have the driver, to put it on the road because we'll hopefully turn a profit.
Right.
That's the incentive in any business.
Are you hiring right now?
Yes.
Okay, are you guys meeting, currently meeting the demand of the public?
I believe so, yes.
And why are you hiring?
We're always hiring. The taxi cab business has a large turnover. It's been known for years to have a large turnover.
Okay. If my 35 guys that you saw the letters for in-
Yes, I did.
If they were permitted by the, already previously permitted by the TA, and they showed up on your doorstep, would you hire them?
It would depend, they would have to complete an application, they would have to pass a drug and alcohol test.
They're already permitted by the TA, so I would imagine they've already- They're already committed by the TA, so I would imagine they've already done that, right?
Well, yes, but just because you have a permit, if it has been expired, you have to go through that process with the TA again. But they would have to pass a drug test, they would have to pass a background check, have a DOT physical, and zero points on their DMV printout for a period of three years before I would consider hiring them, and then I would have to interview them as well.
Okay, so assuming they met your criteria, would you hire them today?
Sure.
Okay.
You wanna send them my way?
You remember ACAB, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Nady?
Jane Nady.
You intervened on his application too?
Yes, I did.
Okay, what was the basis of your intervention?
We believe that if the Taxi Cab Authority Board felt that there was an unmet need west of I-15, that the way for them to address that was to grant restricted allocation to the existing certificate holders to serve west of I-15, versus granting a new certificate.
So he came in with what you think is a niche market, and you guys still opposed him?
Yes, because at the time, we were very restricted on the type of allocations that the Taxi Cab Authority Board would issue us, and so we said, look, you know, if the board believes that sufficient evidence has been presented, that west of I-15 is not meeting a certain need, then you have a means by which to remedy that, and that is to grant that type of allocation to the existing certificate holders. Similar to the then GEO-restricted cabs, you know, we had time-restricted cabs, south of Sunset only cabs, so.
Customer complaints, do you have those documents that you asked for in public request?
Do I have the report? They didn't give me each individual complaint, they gave me a report, yes, I do, I can give it to the board if they wanna make it part of the record.
Have they, has it ever been produced in this matter, do you know?
No, it was just my testimony.
So the documents underlying your testimony were not produced?
No.
Okay.
But I have them here.
I showed you, I showed you your summary of expected testimony, that's the one?
Yeah.
Okay, do you see anything in there that says you would be testifying as to customer complaints?
No.
Or that you had documents relating to customer complaints?
I don't have customer complaint documents, I have a report from the TA, yes.
Is there anything in there that shows a report that you rely upon?
No.
Okay. Is that one of the documents that you rely upon as your evidence, sitting here today?
I haven't submitted the document to the board, I just had it in my testimony.
It's not been produced to me, right?
No, it's just my testimony.
I have no further questions. Can you redirect?
Yes. On that last point, just your testimony, would Mr. Carson have learned about that information, had he taken your deposition?
Yes.
Okay. And he didn't do so, right?
No, sir.
Okay. The only other area I wanna talk about with you is, Mr. Carson was asking you about some interrogatory responses that you gave, and he asked if you had any written evidence, that, or documentary evidence, that would go to his fitness or ability as an applicant, do you remember that?
Yes.
Line of questioning? And you said you hadn't seen any documents?
I said I didn't, I don't have any.
Okay. Do you believe that the performers, the three performers that he's produced in this case, go to his fitness? Or go to the applicant's fitness?
Yes.
So you actually had reviewed those documents?
Yes, I had.
So was that just something you forgot when he was asking you?
Well, I thought he was talking more about his moral character, and if I had anything that he was not fit as a person, so I may have misunderstood the question, but I had reviewed all the performers and all the documents in the application, yes.
So when you were responding to Mr. Carson, saying that you don't have any documents that went to his fitness, you thought that meant you didn't have any documents that went to his moral character?
Yes.
And you don't have any qualms with his moral?
No, and I think he's a nice guy.
Right, but your, your issues with the performer go to the financial fitness or the fitness overall to operate?
Of the company, not of him.
Okay, no further questions, thank you.
Can you redirect?
Yes, sir.
We'll be in recess for 10 minutes.